You're left unmute yourself.
Charles Weiss here.
Thank you. Another board member. Roll call.
Sandra Kidman.
Thank you.
Sandra Kidman.
Thank you very much. Andy, you're muted.
Yeah, Deanna Carey, member.
Thank you, appreciate that. And I think we got Superintendent Wallen, are you there?
I am here, ready to go.
Looking good. And we're joined by Mrs. Lynn Hoffman, Executive Assistant for the Board and for Superintendent Wallen. And alright, let's get this thing going. And we'll start off with the first agenda item. And that's going to be the class schedule, Paige High School class schedule change from A B to seven periods. This topic is Ann Martin driven.
Good evening, board members. Superintendent Wallen, good to be with you guys tonight, talking about the next school year. Forward thinking and planning is always an exciting part of school leadership. I'm going to take a minute, a few seconds here to present to you so that you guys can see what I'm looking at as well. Alright, so you guys should be seeing some slides, red and black, best colors around Sand Devil Nation. Can you give me a thumbs up because I can't see what you guys are seeing perfect, thank you. So as we are looking forward to the next school year, I wanted to take some time and meet up with you guys to build a common understanding about the reasons behind and the reasons for Paige High School altering our daily schedule starting next school year. And so altering our daily schedule will allow us at Paige High School to really maximize our return on instructional time. This can help us to accelerate the time that it takes to narrow the achievement gap that our students have been experiencing. So the information that I'm going to share with you this evening revolves around three needs of our high school learners here in Sand Devil Nation. One is consistent attendance, two is consistent instruction, and three is consistent relationship building. So we know that we'll no longer be using the A B block schedule. And I just want to be upfront that the details of the schedule are in process. I will show you a couple of examples of a six period or seven period. That is the daily schedule that we're working through these processes with, a six or seven period day. So let's jump right into this information. And so altering the daily schedule at Paige High School will allow our students to capture more daily time with their classroom teachers. The A B block that we've been running for several years really lends itself to a culture of independent learning. And our students need daily time and attention that a block schedule doesn't allow for. So when we think about that, we think about the connection between relationships and learning. A wise educator is often quoted as saying, no real learning can occur without real relationships in the classroom. So we really want to emphasize that building relationships every day means we're building on learning every single day. Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. And a six or seven period day allows us to continue that relationship building, which then means we're building on learning day after day after day. The block, the A B block schedule often allows for interruptions of what I call our service, our service to our students. This can be a significant source of lost instructional time. So an A B block, you could think of it like it delays or defers the continuity of learning from day to day to day because of that day in between that interrupts that flow. And this is really important when we talk about aligning our weekly schedule to our guaranteed and viable curriculum through our partnership with Beyond Textbooks. So the six or seven period schedule allows for more opportunities to show up and learn and less opportunities for academic failure. Because we're meeting daily, it will allow daily attendance and daily instruction that what we call coherent flow of instruction from day to day. What I've heard Superintendent Wallen refer to as a continuity of learning, which is a really good way to think about it. We're also teaching for retention and wanting our students to learn for retention. With those interrupted days, retention wanes. So a daily schedule also aligns to the curriculum calendars and framework that we utilize through Beyond Textbooks. There's no extra massaging that we have to do on when we're going to teach what. It is set for us through that framework on Beyond Textbooks. And a day to day, six or seven period schedule allows us to deliver it with greater coherence and flow. Knowing especially that we can circle back tomorrow and reteach in a timely manner. On an A B block, there's that interrupter day where we don't get to interact and learn with our students. Part of our guaranteed and viable service to our students comes with us implementing assessment and feedback cycles. So we definitely have a belief here at Paige High School that's lived out in our P L C teams that we create systems of intervention to provide students with additional time and support for learning. And a six or seven period schedule allows for this to take place. So we talk a lot about feedback loops and assessment cycles. And with the routine that we are using through Beyond Textbooks, a six or seven period daily schedule where we see our students Monday through Friday every day will allow for this to really come to life and be implemented at its fullest. Part of that assessment cycle is something that you guys have heard about, reteach and enrich. Reteach and enrich is also part of a full assessment cycle or plan that a school would run. And reteach and enrich is a model that addresses the learning needs of all students. Because remember they're striving for mastery and beyond of the learning standards within the curriculum. So a six period day, we can provide a student advisory, which can allow for dedicated time for reteach and enrich structures to be in place. With a seven period day, we can still schedule reteach and enrich. It just might not be through a student advisory period. A reteach system is definitely a part of an effective assessment cycle and something that we have been working through and talking through how to make that a more viable system at Paige High School. It also helps us to monitor student learning in a timely basis because we're meeting with students every day. And this monitoring of student learning is another promising practice of our P L C teams. So everyday classes allow for daily informal feedback and formative cycles of students learning, which allows our teachers to make timely adjustments to their instruction. And that can happen in that coherent flow of Monday to Tuesday to Wednesday to Thursday to Friday. Another thing that we're always mindful of and planning for are the daily service minutes for our subgroups. The first subgroup that we must always consider when we think about allocating minutes are English language learners. So a six or seven period day still allows for the necessary daily minutes to be allocated for our English language learners in what we call a targeted English environment. With a six period day, seven period, we can, we can offer that up. And then we think about the continuity of service for our students that have an I E P. And we think about the nature of the learning differences with a student with a specific learning disability. We think about the student who has processing delays, who has short-term memory deficits. That interrupted day on an A B block can disrupt on a whole nother level that flow of instruction from day to day, they're meeting with their teacher, they're building on their learning, and they're able to learn for retention, to retain information. And I mentioned earlier that a need that our students have is consistent attendance. So a six or seven period schedule, once again, provides opportunities to show up and learn every day, which in turn means less loss of instructional time when students experience absences. And so I just want to take us through an example of a student. And maybe this is a student that many people would not consider to be absent a lot. So on the A B block schedule, our athletes experience significant absences. And in a typical year, for example, a basketball player will travel to games on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And let's say that it's this week and they're traveling on a Tuesday and a Thursday. That means that they're going to be absent from all or most of their B day classes. So they won't be present in their B day classes this week, which means they won't see their B day teachers and experience that expert instructor until Monday. On a six or seven period day, that same player in a typical year would still meet their teacher three of the five days. So they would still see them Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. That's sometimes an example that we don't consider because on paper, those absences are excused. And so sometimes we only consider absenteeism, you know, in a way, and we're talking about chronic absenteeism. But this, of course, is another way to mitigate that. When I have a honest relationship with my instructors and I've been able to build a continuity of interactions with them over the first month of school, you know, we would say a student would meet 20 times with their teacher on a six or seven period day. On an A B block, they would only meet 10 times a month with their teacher. And of course, that's considering that there are no holidays or breaks during that month. So when you kind of strip it down to the numbers, you can begin to see more and more how a six or seven period day provides more opportunities to show up and learn, to interact with your teachers, to build on relationships that allow you to build learning from day to day to day. Once again, the details of the daily schedule are still in process, but we do know we are looking at a daily schedule that allows courses to meet in either six or seven periods. So I wanted to show you all some visual examples. So this would be an example of a seven period day. We are planning to block some of our Level Two and Three C T E classes. So a seven period day would allow for an A M and a P M block. It also still allows for adequate English language learner minutes. The trick with the seven period day is it's difficult to work in a student advisory. So facilitating a reteach system would happen in another procedure that we would place in the schedule, not within a student advisory period. And then here's an example of a six period day. This allows for an A M or P M block. I put the little dashes around an A M block for C T E classes. It still allows for more than adequate E L L minutes. And a six period day allows for the student advisory to still be in place, which is something we have been working really hard to cultivate and capture our students with then. And we could utilize the student advisory period to also facilitate a reteach system from within it. And lastly, there is a need to align schedules between Paige High School and Paige Middle School. One of the reasons is we do have shared employees and I don't foresee that practice going away. It can be a magic trick between Ms. Covington and I to often make sure that that works seamlessly so that the needs of their students at Paige High School and Paige Middle School can both be met. I know that was in addition to the preview you guys got, but I wanted to make sure and share that information with you as well. Thank you guys for taking time to listen. What would you like to talk through?
Mr. Candelaria? Can you hear me? I have several questions and comments, but I'll wait for my turn.
Yeah, go ahead and go.
Okay, first of all, Mrs. Martin, you talked about this as if this is a done deal. In the past, the school board has always approved or disapproved schedules like this. And I'm just curious if this is not the case now.
I don't have an answer for you. I am sharing the information that we have developed as a school in this work-study session. Maybe that is the answer.
Can I just, Mr. Wallen, I think you would be the one that would bring the recommendation to the school board. Is that how you talk about it?
Correct, at your next meeting.
Okay, so.
Okay, then, okay. So we'll have, so we'll have a chance to vote on this?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, that's Mr. Candelaria, but sorry, didn't mean to jump in there.
That answers, that answers my first question. So just a few things that I want to comment on. First of all, I've been here since we flipped and flopped and flipped and flopped again on this schedule. Bob, you might remember when we used to have A and B schedule, then we changed to seven period schedule. And it was, you know, praised up and down, the same kind of pretty words that we heard from Ms. Martin today. All the benefits of the seven period schedule. And back then, it was emphasized that it would increase student achievement, which then turned out not to be true. And then we went back to an A B schedule. So I'm just gonna say that here because we've done it before. And I need, I need some more convincing arguments. So anyway. And the other thing I was curious about is according to these schedules, there is only a 30-minute lunch. And I was wondering how you plan on feeding all students in 30 minutes?
We would have more than one lunch. It works in an alternating fashion. So some kids go to lunch, while others go to fourth period, and then it flops.
Okay. And I don't quite understand how it helps with being absent other than the example you provided of the athlete. I'm not sure how, I mean, when you miss a day, you miss a day. I guess if you're always, if you're always missing a day, I can see how that's a problem, but a day missed is a day missed.
Yeah, and right now, a day missed means you won't see the teacher for two more days. As opposed to on a daily schedule like the six or seven period, you'll see them the next day. So the athlete is just an example. There are also students that maybe miss Tuesdays and Thursdays in a week. And then that means that they don't see those teachers for a week.
Okay, now is this seven period schedule based on a five-day week calendar? You kept saying Monday through Friday, but then at the same check, if I'm informed correctly, the calendar committee is looking at a four-day schedule for next year.
My understanding from the calendar committee, they're looking at a four-day schedule for the two years down. The calendar, yeah, next year's calendar has already been vetted twice, I believe. And I think it's pretty much ready for approval, unless you want us to go back and look at the four-period day this year, which is okay with me.
I'm just trying to clarify so I understand what's going on.
Yeah, no, right now you have the sample schedule in front of you, or the sample calendar.
Okay, so my question then is if we had a six-day period schedule, what would that do to electives?
It doesn't impact negatively electives.
I don't quite understand that because right now we have eight classes, correct? And then we would only have six classes. How does that not negatively affect electives?
I mean, we've crunched the numbers, it just doesn't. We'll still offer all the electives that we still currently offer. So we're not looking at taking away any courses because of the move to this schedule.
I'm not talking about taking away courses, I'm talking about the opportunity for a student to even be able to take electives. Because assuming, assuming they still have to take math, they still have to take English, they still have to take science. If there's a six-period schedule, there's only two things left.
Yes, and they'll still have, they'll still have two electives, three their freshman year on a seven-period day.
But that would also require us to take a look at graduation requirements that we have to change.
Correct, mhm. And I've prepared a draft of that in the course offerings book that you guys are going to look through next.
Okay, so was that compared to the previous graduation requirements that we had way back when, when we had that schedule already?
I'm not sure what you mean.
Well, I don't think we have the historical perspective that you do, Ms. Kidman, in relation to that. So I haven't looked that, I don't know when that was.
Okay, it wasn't too long ago, it was just, it was not that long ago, I want to say.
Are you asking if I looked back in old course description books to find the, how you transfer four cohorts of kids to new credits?
Yeah, we have, we went through that, we went through that whole process before. And every cohort had their own requirements and.
Yeah, you'll see that in the book.
We had to go through that before and anyway, so. And we had to change graduation requirements as well. So we're going to have to go through all of that again, correct?
Correct, correct.
Okay. All right.
And that's important to look at because the fact that the high school requires 26 credits for graduations, that was made to fit the eight-period day, but it wasn't made to fit mobility. So in the junior and senior year, you're not going to get a lot of kids transferred into school because they can't, their credits can't match up enough to graduate in four years. And regardless, I would strongly recommend that you reduce the number of credits for graduation because each credit that you put in place carries about a $6,000 or $7,000 price tag on it. And so graduating a kid with 26 credits versus my grandson is graduating from Provee Prep with 22 credits, they still have a high school diploma. The difference is the quality of that diploma that's based on what happens in the school. So putting kids through six more credits, six more opportunities to fail, six more challenges, is that really where we want to go with our student body? Where with 22 credits, which is what the state minimum is, then you're giving some more flexibility so that kids can then move out and do other courses that they want to as well. Remember, we have Now Sage and Sand for some opportunities there. And it changes the whole dynamics. If I have to push for 26 credits, my chances of failing and becoming, what is that called, credit recovery? I know that the high school has 120 kids right now in a course called Credit Recovery, which means they're taking the same course again, which is double the cost of that course. So one of the things you have to consider is the cost associated with these guidelines or regulations that we're putting in place. And is that, does that benefit the kid, the student, or can we do things in a different fashion? Makes sense?
Oh yeah, I've always, I have never been happy with our graduation requirement of 26, but I was in the past outvoted by some of my then-board members. So that I don't have much of an issue with because I think it's silly for us to require more than the state requires in that regard. But again, the possibility, you say, you know, there's, there's six more opportunities to fail. But there's also, where's the opportunities to take more electives if I'm not failing?
You can take.
When there's only six periods.
Well, and that's within the school day. One of the things that I've tasked Ms. Martin with is I want to see kids who are going to graduate with the first, first year this year, with the first, their freshman year of college done through dual credit. And we've reached out and added Naval Technical University to our dual-credit portfolio. We have Coconino Community College. I want to still add Denae College to our portfolio so that that junior and senior year begins to look quite different because you can begin to take courses that will help you through dual credit, that will help you cover that first year of college. And of course, the critical piece that goes with that is in that senior year, we've got to reduce, we've got to cause 100% of our kids to take their F A S F A, which is their financial aid application, because that F A S F A is a gatekeeper to college. If you don't get your F A S F A, your chances of getting in are not good. Now, that may change with the whole COVID environment coming up. You know, I know there's universities now that are looking at, well, we're not going to require the A C T or the S A T as an entrance requirement. So there, you know, we don't know where all that's going yet. But it gives an opportunity for much more things to happen. There's nothing says, just because we have a six-period day or a seven-period day, that we're not offering auto mechanics in the evening through Coconino Community College or through Naval Technical University or through Denae College. If you begin to look at all those kinds of opportunities that can be added in. Unfortunately, I'm, you know, not to be a historian or anything either. But when I was here before, this was when Coconino Community College came in. And I remember the big sell to Coconino Community College was it's going to be a community college without walls. Well, that didn't last very long, obviously, as you look down around at what things were. The idea was that they were going to tap into the whole evening and weekends of the high school. So we would be renting facilities to them and sharing facilities with them and sharing programs with them. And of course, with new leadership, that evolved into a different direction, and that's where we are now. But we need to reach out and pull those pieces in and capitalize on that and make sure that kids have a solid academic college prep program and a solid C T E program. I would love to see every student, and I know it's a requirement, every student taking C T E class and become a completer, which means they need to take a minimum of two courses and have that completer on their college transcript. Because when they go to college, they now have a viable way to earn, you know, go out and earn money to support themselves through their college. It gives a lot of different opportunities, but please don't look at the seven-period day or the six-period day. And I favor the seven-period day. The seven-period day is saying that there's no evening classes going on. We can offer all the classes we want to in the evening through any of those three institutions or even just ourselves. We can say that, you know, some schools, high schools, a lot of high schools actually have what they call a zero period that starts at seven o'clock. That's even possible to put in place. It just depends on what the flavor of our, our students are. Uh, that's even possible to put in place. It just depends on the, what the uh, flavor of our, our students are. The big thing that, that I want all of you to consider, if you sit down with a piece of paper and you go A, B, A, B, A, B, draw that out five, five days, and then you just go put an X on the day you missed, you can begin to see the change in learning. If I'm gonna miss a period of learning, so I start on Monday, I go A-day, B, I'm gone, Wednesday I go A-day. It makes a difference in learning, and that learning is, what is it now, in ninety minutes of a, a period?
About eighty-two?
Eighty-two minutes a period, where in a seven-period day, I'm seeing my teacher every day. Even if I miss a day, I'm seeing them the next day for sure, not based on uh, a fluctuating A, B schedule. If I do an A, B schedule, and we have a snow day, or we have a holiday, or we have whatever, the, the, and it becomes unpredictable as to when I'm gonna see that teacher next, and if I miss that teacher, if, if you believe that quality instruction takes place with a quality teacher, which is what I do, missing that kid, that teacher, two days or three days in a row could be devastating to the learning. There's also some very um, teaching for eighty-five minutes, do they, do teachers really teach that long? They probably do. But it also makes a difference in how you teach for retention. Because you can't just, you know, we're gonna practice this today, we're gonna practice this tomorrow. Now, we're gonna practice it two days from now, so forgetting, which I will tell you is a big thing with me, the forgetting curve is very high, uh, and so the reteach opportunities are much more uh, demanding. And so those are some other pieces, again, that, but that continuity of instruction, and missing, going to class every day is far more important. Uh, especially in the freshman and sophomore, uh, than that A, B day. So even in juniors and seniors, well, I can do college classes. Uh, and we wanna bring in more of those for that dual-credit, and of course, some of them do AP. Uh, so we can put together quite a program. We may be coming back at some point saying, hey, you know, we've got enough kids that wanna do a zero class. Teacher wants to teach it, kids wanna go for it, that's fine. Uh, but with an A, B schedule, it becomes more difficult to put those things in place. And remember that the twenty-two credits, and I know that's not an issue, is a minimum. I can earn as many credits as I want over my four years in high school, or my three years in high school, whatever. The number of credits has nothing to do with my diploma, because the, all the diplomas throughout the state are the same. It's the opportunity to have that freshman year of college taken care of. I even asked Ms. Martin to look at, I wanna see uh, some seniors who have finished their first two years of community college, that is even possible. If we build a strong relationship with the community colleges that we've got available to us, and there may be more community colleges. I don't know if Utah reaches down and, and uh, involves with, with Page or the other community college I'm familiar, or college I'm familiar with, that appeals a lot to uh, my native kids is Fort Lewis. So you got Fort Lewis out there that could be involved in, so it opens up a lot of opportunities beyond, just don't think the seven-period day is the end of your education. Because that evening could be, it could be some very interesting things going on. And then depending on your sports program, uh, you can alternate off that.
Well, I'm glad, I'm glad to hear that you favor the save it seven-period day because I take issue with the six-period one, so.
Yeah, to me, and Anne, can you throw that seven-period schedule back up there? And lunch doesn't have to be restricted to thirty minutes either, it just depends on how we rate the day of, of class for everybody. But um, when you look at the seven-period day, one of the things I wanna be careful about is making sure that I don't um, restrict the opportunities to have those double blocks. Because in the junior and senior year, I wanna see kids in those double blocks in their CTE program. We could even offer a uh, anatomy class for one semester, first and second period, it could be a two-hour block because the teacher believes so strongly and is so good at the labs and the programs that he can put in place, he wants to, he wants to have that eighty-five minutes or ninety minutes of a class. But with this schedule, lunch can be arranged in a, in a different kind of way. But you could have a double block first, second, you could have a double block third, fourth, and you could have a double block sixth, seventh. So again, you're, you know, creating opportunities to put those schedules in there and put those classes in there, um, that make a big difference. And it's just where you put lunch, uh, fourth-period lunch for high school kids could be a little, could go after a fifth period. And that, and, and I've seen it there before, so it's just, again, putting together a, a solid academic program that's gonna get me the best uh, graduates with the highest opportunities to go to college or careers and be completers of their career programs. Um, the young lady that I have on my wall here, Ms. Um, can't see. Red hair has two, she's a completer in two different CTE programs. They're her pro, they're her opportunities at Page, and we would wanna see a lot of kids doing that kind of thing. And I've asked, I've asked, actually tasked again Anne with that, I wanna see a higher completion rate in the CTE programs. It, CTE programs, the way it's structured right now, and I'm sure it wasn't the intent, they appear, they appear to fill an elective opportunity rather than a program career path opportunity. And I'd rather see them focused on that career path than just, oh, I just wanna go take auto just so I can change the tire kind of thing. Uh, or I wanna go take um, body shop because I just, I like to work with this. No, we wanna see you in a career path that's gonna get you that completer. Uh, every kid who comes out of Page High School at their completer side should have their OSHA already done. And uh, there's a couple other certifications that they can do at the high school level that will put them in the front of the line in terms of their employment possibilities in the CTE program as well as, as in getting to the community college. And now, you got the other piece, we also have all these virtual schools out there, virtual possibilities, so. Um, when I was at Grand Canyon, we, we were so, we only have one class per grade level because we were so small. And I needed to have more languages than just Spanish as an example. So we would con, we contacted uh, Mesa Unified School District and tapped into their distance learning program and brought foreign languages to, to our school, so we're not limited just to Navajo and uh, Spanish. We could also, I know my son took three years of, of Ja-, Chinese. Uh, we can pull in lots of different opportunities related to that, so it's just the beginning of what, what is possible. But I think submitting to that, committing to that seven-period day is, is the critical piece in how to make that work. It means we might have to stretch this a little bit, but I think it would be very valuable for what we can do for students and give them the opportunity, and you're gonna have a phase program, just as you asked, and you talked about before with the number of credits, Ms. Kibman. He's gonna have to phase out, and, and it's gonna come up from the freshmen and start rolling through as we reduce the requirements for each grade level. Um, I'm surprised that kids have not seen that they could go to Manta Mesa for twenty-two credits and graduate versus go to Page High School for twenty, what is it, twenty-eight credits, twenty-six credits and graduate. So there's different, different scenarios, and this is a beginning of transforming what that education's gonna look like at the high school.
Sandra, were you, uh, did you have anything else?
No, not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for the questions, good ones. Uh, I'd like to just say a couple things, being, and I'm not gonna go over the history at all. But uh, I've probably been through the changes with Sandra as we've gone from the A, B of the seven, seven-period to the A, B. And the arguments or the discussions have all been evidence-based. Uh, the first time we moved was actually because of a CTE issue and a monetary issue, but the evidence-based information that really stuck with me was those, there was a good portion of, of the populations that really need the everyday contact that is more effective for them. And I think you said it really well, uh, Mrs. Martin, and that's the fact that uh, this is really geared to those kids that are really highly motivated to really get after it and do those kind of things. It's not that the everydays aren't, but uh, this just lends itself a little bit better to that. I think there's a couple things we need to think about, uh, when we talk about equity. About sixty percent of our student population is below the meets expectations level, this is pre-COVID. And so I think that's an equity issue that can be resolved, hopefully, with the seven-day schedule or six, but seven, seven, a period schedule. Um, and uh, the other part in terms of what you, how you explain that with regard to uh, athletes or kids in extracurricular-type programs that are normally called to travel during the week and those kind of things, and how they miss their teacher. They're not counted as absent because of their school activities, but yet, the real important thing is they missed the, missed being in the classroom. And uh, that was your point, and well-taken, so.
Well, but, can I just say something, um, Bob? That was the point I was trying to make, is that we received all this evidence that it's gonna get better and that we were gonna increase student achievement, and then we had a small bump for a short period of time. And then everything went back to the way it was. So I would really like to see how we're gonna do it differently this time. How we're actually gonna raise student achievement, because I just don't buy the whole um, argument that, oh, the schedule change will fix this. I think there's more, the, more is, I mean, you can sell this to me saying, okay, we're gonna save a lot of money, or we're gonna, you know, there, there's these arguments versus these arguments. But I would really like to see how that will actually improve student achievement this time.
Right, and, and I really appreciate that, that statement, but as you know, uh, and as we all know, education has many, many pieces to it. And what I was excited about before COVID was that we were on our way to establishing systems that are pre-K to twelve, establishing processes that are P quick, PK to twelve. I see that going on, I also see a lot of pushback, but that's just normal. Because anytime you change any, anything, uh, there's gonna be chaos in the middle of it. But that's exactly what we talked about in terms of beginning this year. Because it's just not a matter, if you, you can have, you can have twelve periods a day, it's not gonna help you. You can have them stay twenty-four hours a day, the most important part is, is what content and how they they are engaged in the classes, and so that, that's the most important part. You can, and, and I, I really think that when you just look at evidence, the seven-period day gives you the best opportunity, day-to-day engagement. But then, you're exactly right, you have to have those key elements that everybody is, is with the students from pre-K all the way through twelve, and they're our students. And once you have that team ownership of your student body and everybody moving in the same direction, uh, then it gets better. Uh, that's, I think that's what we'll see, so appreciate uh, what you said. The one question I do have for you, Mrs. Martin, uh, has to do with um, the biggest kickback we always would get was from teachers in terms of their uh, their ti-, their, their time to prepare for their classes. And that was always the biggest, biggest sell on behalf of the staff in terms of the A, B. And uh, there's the seven, the seven uh, seven periods takes away from that somewhat. But I guess the question really is, uh, the team you have working on this, uh, is, is it a good widespread across your, uh, across your staff?
Um, so our school leadership team and our student advisory steering committee um, has been in discussions about this. That captures um, many different types of instructors. Um, I also just wanna emphasize that decisions like this should be very um, student-centered.
Yes.
Um, and we wanna make sure that we're building a culture that, that elevates and promotes that we make student-centered decisions, um, not adult-centered decisions. Our teachers will still have um, the appropriate everyday prep time uh, that teachers across the district have. Um, they'll still have collaboration time afforded through Wednesday um, early release and uh, from the three o'clock to three forty-five on a daily basis. Hopefully, that answers your question.
Yeah, and, and you did say that it's a work in progress in terms of your schedule and those kind of things.
Just for times and things, yeah.
When, when could we expect to see uh, that work?
In the next month. I, I don't know what your all's timeline is, I, I was um, only aware of, of this conversation. I apologize, I wasn't aware of the, the next steps.
No, we're fine, and, and we're, we are the ones that will support the recommendations. And so you guys set timelines uh, with, with regard to that.
Yeah, the decision between the six or seven is really kind of the first um, decision. And then from there, I mean, we already have mock times set up, um, you know, drafted out specifically because of the need to ensure appropriate English language learner targeted minutes within our day.
Right.
So we've already kind of drafted out various times, you know, do we put lunch here, do we put lunch there? If we have student advisory, we can back student advisory with lunch instead of fourth period. Uh, Larry mentioned even moving lunch back a little bit in the afternoon for our um, older learners at the high school.
Okay. Well, let me upfront just say thanks for all the work you guys are doing and continue to do, so we'll look forward to, to hearing back from you. Yeah, board members, any, anybody else, oh, I'd like to acknowledge Ms. Desiree Fowler. Thank you for being able to fix the connection issues. So, and it looks like you're not, not in your house, are you in a vehicle? Oh, okay. Okay.
Yes, I'm actually in my vehicle. I've been on since the beginning. You just couldn't see me, I'm having internet problems, so I'm in my vehicle parked on a little hill here.
Okay, well.
But I just wanted to comment back onto the presentation that was presented to us. I think it's very important to know, you know, the school board's previous um, decisions that were made, and I appreciate that. But also, I, from a parent and a student's perspective, I mean, being able to be a part of the site council at the Page High School and having to go through all those years and, and going, you know, flip-flopping back and forth. But um, that's also good knowledge as well. But I must say about darn time, we are finally getting our students to be able to get an associate's degree before they leave Page High School and really focusing on what we need to, to make our student achievement much better. And then also, I mean, just, I've been taking notes and looking at, you know, listening and just kind of looking at how things are. But I still need a little bit more convincing.
Okay, any other comments? Mr. Weiss, Ms. McCary, are we good? Uh, Dee, you've gotta unmute yourself, sorry. Go ahead, go ahead, Chuck.
I was still kind of new to this, so I'm still just trying to understand the schedule and what's best for the students, but I mean, I'm, I'm still kind of grasping it, so. Probably still need a little bit more insight as to uh, you know, the whole schedule. So far, I just wanted to let you know, that's where I'm at right now.
Okay, appreciate that, Chuck.
Hey, Bob, can you hear me?
That's all I had to say.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Ms. McCary.
Yes, the presentation was just outstanding, I have just a question, concern. One is, all this has been developed, and I'm just concerned of the impact that it's gonna have on the students. What do they say? Then you have a core group that has developed this, those are, aren't with the group, what are their impression, what's their input? Ms. Martin?
Thanks, those are, those are great questions. Um, in my mind, I go back to school year seventeen, eighteen, when um, school leadership team was rolling this around in our discussions and thoughts and deliberations, and one of the members um, actually had her students read an article. And the article was written from a student's point of view, and it was basically pros-cons. It was one of those types of articles, pros-cons of a block schedule. And she invited me to come in because she wanted me to hear how they're, they would interact with the information. Um, and of course, through there, it was a Socratic semin. Um, and of course, through there, it was a Socratic seminar. Um, it came to light that some of the, the, um, cons that were listed in this student-written article uh, were, um, unfortunately, the block schedule, this is just an example, uh, that I can recall in the moment. Um, allows for, um, a longer block of instruction. And too often, it's utilized to just release students to do independent work. Um, and so there's that, that loss of that contact time with the guided instruction, with the direct instruction. And I remember when they were, they had read through the article and then they were in circles discussing. And then they all shared out at the end, and one of the students said, um, while I, I appreciated the pros and cons, unfortunately, I see evidence of the cons in my experience at school. Um, and that kind of really struck a chord with me because of course, the students, um, like that they can get their homework done before they go home. Um, they don't have to take practice with them. Uh, but this student, uh, was really astute in saying, you know, she could see how, um, some of the pitfalls of a block schedule um, can actually come to life and, and be harmful in, in some ways. As far as, uh, I, I'm thinking that you're referencing, uh, what happens in any change cycle, what we call the resistance. Um, was your second question. Um, the resistance really has to do with what, um, Bob mentioned, for the most part. That's kind of the, the key, uh, bit of criticism that is typically brought up. I, um, feel that the way that I can best, um, address that is that we need to make decisions that are student-centered, um, and not adult-centered. And we, we still have, uh, the appropriate amount of prep time allocated with a six or seven-period day.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Dee.
Ms. Martin, really appreciate that. And, uh, to keep us focused, we're always student-centered. Don't let us slay from that, all right? Uh, any other comments?
Can I just? Yes. After, um, that information was shared, can we get some updated information from students? I mean, I'd like to hear some of the pros and cons that is very much updated from students.
Um, I will work on that.
I think, um, we also need a few little research-based reminders of what the, the, the pros and cons are. And then I was just gonna add, you know, this is, when you said, Bob, you know, there's gonna be chaos in the meantime or throughout the change. I'm very aware of the fact that that chaos and change is gonna directly affect my kids. And by that thought, all the kids, you know, I know what that is like. Because I got four more high schoolers coming through Page High School, so. You know, I, I am very aware of the fact that we need to make student-based decisions. Because this, every decision that we make on the school board directly affects me and my children. And in that way, I know it affects everybody, so, you know, that's, that's a fact of life, so.
Yeah. Appreciate that.
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to, um, the request for wanting research. Um, and when we talk about aligning a schedule to a curriculum framework, um, that's grounded in the work of Rick DeForre, who was the founder of PLCs and how to operationalize them. Uh, when we talk about aligning a schedule to routine assessment and feedback cycles. Um, research shows that, um, assessment and feedback cycles, um, implemented properly, which means there's a system in place that the schedule allows for, um, does improve achievement. Uh, when we talk about digging into research about which schedule is best, we're gonna find research that points to all of them as a viable option. Um, which makes sense to me because if we knew what the magic schedule was, um, we would maybe all be using it. So I, I really want us to consider the systems that we are working really hard to implement, which is requiring transformation, um, within our district. Um, and making sure that the decisions that revolve around those systems, um, are using the research of the system. Uh, because the research out there on schedules, block, hybrid, um, hybrid block, traditional, um, really, we can find things to, to kind of suit our, our purposes in any way. Um, but what we really wanna focus on are those systems, which are gonna have, um, a benefit for our students. Um, and we work, um, we put in our time and effort into a schedule that allows us to implement those systems, um, effectively.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Martin.
Bob?
Yeah, Chuck, go.
I just was curious, so I know we're on the topic of, um, the schedule, correct? Basically, this is about the, the high school schedule?
Yes.
So I was just curious, uh, so I know, I believe the schedule is from eight AM to three PM, correct? The three?
Yep, three.
And, um, that's the current schedule, so I was just curious, I know, like, like, um, I'm kind of agreeing with you, Sandra, about, you know, how kids, when they go to high school and the schedule and how it affects, you know, them and parents, right? So, um, but I was just curious. As far as like changes go, um, like from eight AM to two thirty, uh, Monday, Tuesday, and I was just thinking like, and then Wednesday, half a day, and then Thursday and Friday, eight AM to two thirty. I don't know what, if, I'm just thinking like for the students, you know. And that half day in the, on Wednesday would give them more time in the afternoon to do any makeup or. Or just curious the thoughts on that.
Larry, Anne, uh, you, you wanna, you wanna tackle that?
Uh, I have not, um, thought any bit about changing the, um, arrival or departure time of school. Um, that wasn't part of, um, I mean, you would still see first period beginning at eight AM and seventh period ending at three on a six or seven-period day.
We have to compare that to the state requirements for seat time. Uh, there are some minimum requirements, so we have to meet not only for the day, but for the, uh, course. The course has to be in session, I believe, a hundred and twenty-four minutes. Is that right, Anne, about that? Uh, so we'd have to see how that all matches out. I know there are, um, schools that get out at two thirty, um, but, um, and it used to be the, the constraint, uh, several years ago was middle school, because they had the hu- the longest, uh, seat time. They were at like a thousand minutes a year. That's been changed back now to match the high school, so there's all kinds of possibilities there in relation to that. But we'd have to calculate out the, the amount of time so that, that fits the credit requirement and the attendance requirement.
Anything else, Chuck? You okay?
I'm good. I just wanted to ask that question.
Hey, thank you so much. All right, anybody else?
Um, Bob, can I just confirm?
Yeah.
Oh, hold on.
You're mute, you just muted yourself back, so.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, I just wanna confirm that this is gonna come back on the February ninth agenda as an action item. So that I, just so that I'm clear for my preparation purposes, is that correct?
That's the plan. Um, if we, uh, had to do more research, we'll, we'll see if we're gonna make that deadline, but I think we can. Um, because we need to get moving and says to begin to schedule next year's courses.
Okay.
Well, be that the, 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 uh, the schedule, then, Anne, could we get, and, you know, you've mentioned several resources. Could you at least just give us, you know, the, the, the ref- the references that you had to send to all the board members?
Yes, I can email that to, to Lynn Hoffman and she can forward it to you guys.
Thank you so much. Does any other board member want anything else? Are we okay? We're good? Okay. Ms. Martin, thank you so much, appreciate it. Item number B, uh, Page High School Course Description Handbook for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year, Anne Martin.
Hello again. Um, so I'm just gonna, uh, highlight a few of the pages. Um, and the first page, and I made a printout of the PDF so we could ensure we were talking the same page numbers, um, is page eleven. Uh, this is where you will see the, uh, PHS graduation requirements, uh, for the, uh, seven-period day. This is what it would look like. Uh, Sandra had asked about this as well, so you can see that there is a transition. Um, I did look back in old handbooks, um, as I had mentioned before, to, to start that process of creating this table. So that's the first difference that you would see if you, um, looked at a previous one. In fact, the current one that we're using for this school year.
Can you share the screen, please?
Oh, I, let me, I gotta open that up, sorry.
Um, Mrs. Martin, for some reason, it never, it doesn't show any of the changes in yellow highlighted.
Oh, I, I should highlight this page. Um, but page eleven is a new page.
Okay, can, in the future, in the future, can we please have yellow highlights for all the changes? Because when we're preparing and we're going through fifty-three pages, it's nice to have that easier available and.
Yeah.
I would appreciate that.
Yeah, no problem. All right, I'm just letting it load so that all the pages are there, then I can share my screen. All right, can you give me a thumbs up that you're seeing page eleven, PHS graduation requirements? Thank you. All right. Any, um, questions, things that you're, you wanted to ask about regarding page eleven?
Anne, if you hit Ctrl plus, I believe it'll make it a little bit larger.
Well, I see the only difference is the electives have changed from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-five. Everything else is the same.
Um, yeah, we, uh, we don't really have latitude to change the core requirements. Um, the A B block, um, part of the, the reason for having twenty-six credits is because the A B block has more blocks for students to fill. Um, and so then the where you increase those are in the elective credits, um, because English, math, science, and social studies, um, stay consistent. Did the Zoom help there? Okay. So the next page that you're going to go to, if you have it in front of you, is page sixteen and seventeen. And this is where, uh, we communicate our dual enrollment courses. So we've been fortunate enough to be able to add some for our current year and for next year. Um, so if you were to look side-by-side at, um, our current handbook and then this handbook, you would see that we've been able to, um, add in some dual enrollment within our CTE programming. And then, I think I just messed it up. Yep. And then we've also been able to add in, um, three of our, uh, Navajo Language and Culture classes through Navajo Technical University as well. So, uh, we hope to continue to grow that, that list and maybe it'll end up being two pages long here before we know it. Any questions on that information? The next is, uh, page twenty-four. This takes you to our science offerings. So there've been some changes, um, at the, the state level with science. Um, and this is not just, uh, for high schoolers, uh, but really because of the change from Arizona Science Standards to the Next Generation Science Standards. Um, we have been, uh, we completed kind of an audit of our courses and trying to figure out how our students can have access to all the necessary learnings that will allow them to find success on both the new AZ Science Assessment, which will be given to eleventh graders, uh, in the future, and then the ACT, which we have been able to offer, um, to all of our eleventh graders and is now becoming part of our assessment plan with the state. So that would be the eleventh grade test that the state is looking at for, um, achievement accountability. So what our science team did was they went through various scenarios of how to ensure that the next-gen science standards assigned to high school learners can be captured within the three credits of science that are required. And what they've come up with is that every student needs to take Earth and Space or an equivalent of, which we also offer AP Environmental Science, um, Biology and Chemistry. And through those three courses, uh, we will capture and provide access to that guaranteed viable curriculum uh, that begins with the next-gen science standards. So they also created some flow charts for easy navigation of all of the choices. So you can see that by the eleventh grade year, students would have access to those three areas of science, uh, physical, life, chemical. And then, uh, we still are able to offer the science elective courses, but the anatomy, physiology, AP biology. Anything you guys want to talk through on those? The next one is page thirty. And this really isn't a, um, a change per se, uh, but it does look different. Um, so with the A B block schedule, we have been running our, um, health and PE credit together within, uh, what we've called a co-teach model, where students spend some of the time in their PE mode and some of the time in their health mode. Uh, with a seven-period day, uh, we would have students having health one semester and then rotating to their PE class the next semester. Um, there would be the vice versa of that happening as well. Maybe you have PE first semester and health second semester, depending on how it flows into the master schedule. So that, that's a slight, um, uh, change, still the same, uh, courses. They're just gonna be listed, um, separately as opposed to having all of that. They're just gonna be listed um, separately as opposed to having all of that as one. And I believe those are all of um, the changes. Is there anything else uh, from the handbook uh, that you all wanted to talk through?
Anybody, or is everyone okay? Everybody? We're good? Okay, it sounds like we're good, Ann, thank you so much. Appreciate that. Okay, next item on the agenda, discussion regarding budget priorities for 2021, 2022, uh, Mr. Wallen.
Thank you, let me um, go ahead and share my screen with you. Hope I'm doing this right. Are you seeing the establishing budget priorities?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm gonna hit present on that. Um, what I wanted to do was just lay some foundations uh, for this and look at uh, the things that we're gonna be going through. Things change daily with the budget. As I said before, it's uh, you know, the $1.9 trillion um, proposal by President Biden will have an impact on us, uh, just as the S R, the S R two, that was just recently passed, will have an impact on us, but I wanted to make sure we're all on the same page because I've never been through a budget process with this board before. And also, I've never been through a budget process where we're having to reduce. If you're in Arizona and you're a growing district, you're okay. If you're in a Arizona and you're a declining district, it gets to be pretty tough. So I just wanted to lay the groundwork, um, get some little bit of discussion going as we begin to put together the 2022 budget. So with that, um, and then also to introduce Mr. Weiss to the way budgets works in Arizona. Um, there's two pieces to the MNO budget, and that's really what we're talking about, is um, the MNO uh, maintenance and operations, which is how we do things with salaries, utilities, supplies, uh, fuel for school buses. And then there's capital outlet, and capital outlet has undergone changes over the course of the past five or six years. Um, right now, it's called District Additional Assistance. Uh, it could be called unrestricted capital, it has those different topics to it. But um, capital outlet basically purchases those things that are over $500 and lasts more than two years and go on an inventory list that your capital assets list that you're accountable for. So those are kind of the pieces, and those don't cross uh, over with each other. They have to stay in that area. The way you increase the maintenance and operation budget is you have a um, MNO override, and that requires the consent of the voters. Uh, you can increase the MNO budget by 15%, which levies a tax on the taxpayers of the district and um, and funds those pieces. You can also have a bond program, and bond is for the capital facilities. So all the land and improvements of building improvements, furniture and equipment, technology, all those places. And I don't know, I didn't go back and look at the history of when the last bond election or capital outlet was in page, but uh, those are uh, ways to increase these two budget limits is by consent of the voters. Then just to give you uh, a thing to look at in uh, the categories in 2021, the adopted budget that we started out with this year was 17 million, capital was 1.4, federal projects was three, and the aggregate was 22, but the MNO and capital are the two that are controlled and highly heavily regulated. So we are looking at that, and that's what funds our operations as I was talking about. The FY 2021 revision, I believe you did that in December. Went in and and put that in place and reduced it a little bit, but two things have happened since. The full impact of the um, attendance or the student loss, we've lost about, and I'll show you some more information on that, about 250 students at this point. And that is what drives that MNO budget is the number of kids in school, the number of butts in a seat, I call it. And each student is worth about $4,300 um, uh, from state aid. And so right now, the legislature is looking at uh, the the um, what's called the JLBC has put out about a 1.9% inflation factor. So the budget, those uh, MNO and capital would, we could potentially go up based on inflation. We have revision number two that's coming up, and that's gonna reduce your MNO budget to 16 million. Your capital outlet will basically stay the same, federal grants will stay the same and reduced to aggregate. And that is a factor that revision number two is based on two key pieces. One is the loss of the 250 students. And two, uh, we were notified in January that because we are in virtual learning, in the governor's executive order to do virtual learning, he classified students as AOI. AOI is generally funded at 95%. So in January, we were notified that we have to reduce our budget by another 600 and some thousand dollars as a result of going to that model. And so we'll see where we end up at the end of the year because it's fluid right now. There is legislation in the legislature to take us back to write this regular accounting kids in their seats, but we'll see if that's gonna pass or not. As I said earlier, uh, in tracking those things, the um, Republicans in the House have said, no, no monies for for education uh, in their budget. So you look at the expenses for 2021, salaries make up 58%, benefits 19%, services 12, 10, 1. So basically, in in working at reducing the budget, um, salaries and benefits are about 79% of the budget. So 79% of that is already fixed in contracts. And so one of our positions has been to look at using attrition to deal with that. So again, when you talk about the amount of money that we have to reduce, really, the only place we can take a lot of that is out of services, supplies and other. Uh, and so in the MNO side, so it requires some real discussion and heavy work to put something together that will fit. Right now, as I said, um, we have um, 343 employees now. Uh, we're 188 certified, 155 classified, and that's where that 77% is. We have uh, reduced uh, through attrition, uh, 44 positions and almost $750,000 right now. So remember, I made that commitment to you that as positions opened up, we would evaluate them and see where we're going with um, attrition as the first option. And that's one of the things we want to talk about uh, as and throw out just possibilities is you want to keep that as the number one way to reduce the budget is attrition, um, because we may have to go deeper than that depending. Uh, and just to add to that, because one of the things that um, I don't know, my 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 dad used to say, talking out both sides of your face. Uh, we're talking about a budget cut uh, to our MNO budget. However, COVID-19, which is not sustainable funding, has provided this kind of money to us, and the ESG award out of the COVID one package, a million dollars. S R one, I gave us 497,000. S R two, which is coming, is right now estimated to be $2 million. Uh, DEMA actually came out to be 10,000, that's the Department of Emergency Management. Uh, NETC, Navo Transitional, Navo Transitional Engineering Company. I'm not sure I'm getting it right, uh, gave us $11,000 to purchase hotspots for kids. So right now, there's a whole another piece out there called this 3.6 million that is coming in. And then again, as I said, President Biden is proposing his 1.9 trillion dollar budget. So that's gonna be probably um, S R three or four or something like that. So those fundings are coming in at the same time, and they're supposed to mediate uh, the impact of COVID. And in some cases, like S R one did make a difference, ESG grant is helping. Um, and so we're to putting everything we can into those COVID funds. And those COVID funds are coming to us with, you can spend it on any legitimate educational function, and you don't have to worry about supplanting. And so that helps. So in our first budget revision, decrease in student enrollment was about 200 kids, 50 kids. That reduced our budget by 1.3 million. A funding adjustment for the AOI, which is coming up, will be uh, on your February board meeting, is another reduction of 635,000. Uh, and so that gives us a a a reduction of our MNO budget of $2 million that we're having to look at. So we're, and every day that passes, we get closer to the end of the year, the less opportunity there is to balance the budget in that respect. So just so you know that those are the struggles we're having in relation to that funding impact. Uh, planning for 20, and that's, let me go back, that's 2021, now that's this year. Right now, this year, for example, we have a $256,000 um, Xerox contract for five years, every year for five years, $256,000 for copy machines. I'm in the process of reducing those machines down uh, as much as I can. Um, we're looking at possibly returning seven to eight of those machines if I can get the vendor to accept them. Uh, because again, it's a five-year contract, so be wary of five-year contracts when the future looks cloudy and uncertain. Now, just talking about planning for next year for the FY 22 budget, uh, we have a product, product, projected enrollment. And and I remember our budget for next year is based on the 100-day count, which was yesterday, I believe it was, or the day before. And we actually had lost 200, right now, we've lost 250 kids, K-12. We know that the charter school is probably gonna open up next year. Uh, they're they're, according to the information on the charter board website, they're projecting to have about 100 students. And they um, they have received a five-year, $250,000 opening grant, which is standard practices for a charter school. So that's already been approved. So there's a potential of losing about 350 students projected right now, what that would look like. So a projected budget impact for 2022 of the base support level, uh, if we lost those 350 kids, we'd go down in another 1.5 million. District additional assistance will go down another 157,000 and projected, so the projected direction would be 1.6 million. However, the legislature, the governor's budget at least, wants to fully fund district assistance, so it actually could go up. But right now, we're just using it based on what the current practices are. So those are some of the challenges in relation to that. Now, one of the most interesting things um, that I think about is we budget for the loss of 250 students or 350 students. And come August, we have 250 students come back to school that we can't identify right now. Uh, and then we're, we've already, you know, staffed accordingly, and uh, and that could be a real interesting challenge to get there. But this is kind of the numbers that are floating out there. So one of the ways you begin to look at uh, balancing the budget and putting that is to develop a ratio of students to teachers, and then you staff according to that. So the beige is this year, so current students in 2021 at Lakeview, right now is 437, current teachers is 23. That gives you a ratio of 1 to 19, and it goes on down the line. And then again, just as for discussion, um, Desert View is uh, 1 to 24, middle school is 1 to 23, high school is 1 to 17. Madison Mesa is more difficult to calculate because it's um, uh, an alternative school and this SSVA is is really teachers who are supporting that distance learning. So looking at projected students for next year, and I did not take out the 100 students for the charter school opening that would be at K-5, so I just rolled the um, each grade level up so that in Desert, in second grade, we looked at the first grade numbers and just rolled those over. This is an example. The critical piece is right here. What ratio do we expect? So if we go to a 1 to 25 ratio for Lakeview, that means they would have 19 teachers based on this enrollment. If we go to 1 to 25 ratio at um, Desert View, that means we would have 20 teachers. And then on down the line, 30 at middle school, 30 at the high school, and then 15 and 15, because this then becomes what you can uh, support with your budget. So, you know, one of the things is, just my gut is 25 is a real high for kindergarten, first and second. It probably should be more like 20, then 25, and then possibly 30, and see how that comes in. Then that establishes our core pattern. Then we look at federal projects, uh, grants and stuff like that to help reduce class sizes. So we, once we've established our core, then anything outside of that is reducing class sizes. Whoops, sorry. Does that make sense? Questions on that, on, we set a ratio and that's how we staff, we staff based on students in school.
Yeah, I just have a question, why is our ratio at the high school currently so low?
Uh, because you have a lot of teachers at the high school. It's, I I just, that's what it is, I don't, um, that's the number. And and understand at the high school too, you've got CTE classes, which usually are capped at about 20, because how many kid, you know, 20 kids auto shop class or an auto body class, and some of those, there's some different pieces in there. But there's also additional funding that come with those kids. One of the ways to help mitigate this is to get more kids into CTE, get more kids into CTE programs, and that brings in more money through the the CTE uh, grants, as an example. So, oh, well, Sandra, yeah, the other question, the other reason is because you have an A B schedule. A B schedules can't require more kids, require more teachers. Uh, they're they're rich in that respect. So those two pieces, but the biggest piece, I think, if I were answering, if you ask me that question again, I'll tell you. Number one piece is the A B schedule, is what creates that number.
Okay. And that's basically how you can say that a seven-day period schedule will uh, cost us a lot more money.
Correct. Correct, as as we look forward, it will reduce. My preliminary um, projections is it could reduce, uh, I could take, it would take, it would reduce it by seven positions. Uh, but I'd have to sit down with Ann and run the numbers and run the the schedule and and look at student requests, because we want to build a schedule based on student requests. So once they get, once we get the course description catalog approved, and that would also be Lynn, I believe, on the next agenda as well, so that when we can begin scheduling students into the, loading kids into their schedule for the next year and creating their career path. But that's where it it does come in. So that's another piece that would go into the whole piece. Um, so I just threw some budget priorities up there, I gave you a whole list. Uh, if you click on that blue budget priorities, it brings you a whole list of possibilities uh, that we're working through and looking at. But I think the, for me, uh, at least in talking with board members, the 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 best thing to do is to look at reducing salaries and benefits or positions through attrition. That would be the first one, is try to work through attrition. It doesn't always work, because that English teacher leaving may, I may need a math teacher instead of an English teacher. So I have to look at certification and what's appropriate. But again, that doesn't hurt anybody, that's a voluntary thing that people do and go forward with that. Uh, another possibility to look at is to reduce the number of staff on 12-month contracts. What's the difference between 11-month and 12-month contracts? Anybody know? What's the difference in 11-month, well, besides money? What's the difference in 11-month and 12-month contracts? 12-month contracts give you 20 days of paid vacation.
Yeah.
You'd like that, huh? Get 20 days of paid vacation. Uh, but looking at, do we need people on 12-month contracts? Uh, and what I've done in the past, for example, is my, um, it really hits usually my grounds people is I give them 11-month contracts, but then I budget to pay them to work that 11th month, to work that 11th month, rather than paying for that vacation. So that's something that we have to look at is is that reduction. Then all your administrators are on 12 months, there's a lot of directors and a lot of people are on 12 months. Uh, and so we're looking at those people and how we can do that, and then budget accordingly. Of course, reducing the Xerox expenses, like I said, is $256,000 right now, contract that we have. We're in year two of a five-year contract for copying uh, and trying to get at least $100,000 out of that, possibly more. Then it's decrease the number of teaching positions to a formula-based allocation. Although for me, and that's why we want the board to tell me, uh, teaching positions are most important pieces to me. So they would be low on my priority list, as long as the ratios are this, are in there. Uh, I want more, you know, teachers in there. Decrease the number of teaching positions by approximately 10 FTEs. If we go to the A B schedule, then that that'll fit itself out. Decrease the number of classified staff, look at a coordinated approach through federal and state programs. Right now, we have Title I, Title II, Title IV, Title VI, Title JOM, whatever, and it's all over the place. And then we have a whole bunch of people that are in Impact Aid. And it's all over the place. And then we have a whole bunch of people that are in Impact Aid funding. And there's no coordinated approach. For example, one of the things I'm studying with Terry right now is that, uh, a, what should a elementary school office look like? Should it be a principal? It should be a principal, an assistant principal, an administrative assistant, a clerk, and a counselor. Uh, middle, the, both schools should be basically s- staffed that way. But there's a lot of other people out there involved in this. Uh, high schools should look differently than that. Uh, should be a principal, assistant principal, a, um, athletic director, a CTE director, uh, administrative assistant. So again, we've got a lot of people in a lot of positions in a lot of places. Uh, we've already taken what, what you call the Aces program. And we moved those staff over to other positions that are mostly working in Manson Mesa right now. So that program, that saved us two positions of the ones that we've reduced. So looking at that coordinated approach. If we want to commit title one to, um, uh, accelerated learning, then that's how we would staff. So, eh, and how would that look and that kind of thing? So these are just possibilities. Again, go back and look at the budget priorities list. There's a lot more on there. Uh, I try to focus on everything that I can that will not hit personnel uh, as much as possible, but some things are just going to have to be discussed as sheer magnitude of the size. Um, one of the things we've talked about and we're going to be practicing the next quarter is extending the bus routes to increase the transportation control limit reimbursement, but also to recruit more kids. Uh, moving a little bit more into, um, Shanto, uh, inscription house. Those areas to see if we can pull more kids this way instead of to Kianta, still some Kianta kids. Um, evaluate the stipend list. We've, you're paying almost three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in stipends in addition to salary. Uh, what would that look like and how can we standardize and get control of that? Uh, and that's where, you know, it goes back to the district, uh, having control of these kinds of things. So there's a lot of things to look at in relation to this. If, again, if you kick, um, go back here into this, I'll, I'll list, listed out all kinds of things as possibilities to reduce. Um, reduce and meet our budget. We have to meet our budget, basically, is the bottom line. One of the things that's inherent in this, I'm gonna stop sharing now. One of the things that's inherent is in that, is that um, Impact Aid, you're very, your Impact Aid is basically running the district in terms of what you would have done in an override or bond election. You're, you know, you took the bond election and the override out, so you've been relying on Impact Aid to fill those pieces, which means our facilities are not getting the attention they need now. So we've got to look at that. How, and the more people I have, uh, and you have a lot of people funded out of Impact Aid, um, the more people I've funded out of Impact Aid, the less opportunity I have to maintain facilities. And we are facility-rich, as you well know. So looking at that piece now, in the governor's budget, he's, he's proposing to fully fund, um, the, uh, school, um, oh, what's it called, Lynn? The school, um, the ones that does all the building stuff, school.
Facilities board?
Yeah, the facilities board. Thank you. I, I felt my feet. He's proposing to fully fund the, the facilities board. He says it's going to cost about two hundred million dollars more, so that means we would have more opportunity to tap, tap into that. Uh, we also have that million-dollar S R two money coming that we could maybe tap in. For one of the things, um, that I've got my eye on with Cody is H V A C systems. If we are at the end of the life in some of our H V A systems and we can put them under COVID because we want to increase air quality, we may be able to fund some of them that way. Now that takes care of a short-term issue, but that's a, that's a possibility. So again, it's fluid every day based on the wa- way the legislature is going. We're just, uh, and so we have all these possibilities. Um, in relation to this, you know that kindergarten is funded half-time, but we offer full-day kindergarten and most places do, uh, just so you know that. Uh, looking at preschool and what it costs, uh, but I also want to increase preschool, uh, and that kind of stuff. So looking at everything and trying to pull it together, uh, as we go through deep detail by detail present a, a budget package to the board that will balance your budget, um, and, and put us forward like that. So that's kind of the picture of moving to the, uh, uh, B district. And what I'm asking you to tell me is there, like I'm saying, number one for staffing is attrition. Is the board okay with that, that, that position? Uh, in some cases, we can't do it. Most cases, we can. Uh, and then the possibility of reducing contracts. Is there any, uh, how would I say? Is there anything that is just totally off limits? Um, one.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I can say something, or so you mentioned you've never been working in a district, um, that had to, that had to reduce. A little history here, sorry. I know I keep bringing that up over.
That's okay.
Again, but the year, the year I became a school member was the year where the first major budget hits, you know, hit, uh, um, in two thousand and nine. And ever since then, I have never seen us increase our budget. It's always been cut, 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 reduce, 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 reduce. So, um, here are some of the things that I definitely, I'm going to, I'm just speaking for myself now. I definitely support attrition. I think that is the best thing we can do. Um, however, there might come a time where we have to actually cut some positions beyond that. And, um, this is what I feel is lacking in the proposal. For one, I didn't see any mentioning of reducing possibly district staff or district office salaries. Um, in the past, when we have only reduced, um, teaching positions, that did not go over very well. And I would prefer something where if we, um, reduce, like, say, our teaching staff by ten percent, then all the other staff needs to be reduced by ten percent as well. Be that in the district office, be that in maintenance or wherever. Now, I understand that's not always quite feasible. But there needs to be also some, some fairness. And, um, um, we'll also have to look at administrative costs because I think our next, um, report, audit report is going to show that, that's my prediction that we're administrative-heavy. So then I think we also need to look at a few salaries that might be overinflated. Um, and, um, because when I was looking through the salary service that we got from A S B A, we have some positions that we pay a lot more than our districts that are just like us. And, um, I think that would be a place where we could make some cuts that might be uncomfortable, but reasonable, because when we're paying somebody forty thousand dollars more for the equivalent of position, then we really need to take a look at that and make sure that, um, you know, that our pay structure is in line. So that's one of the few things that I've noticed there, and that's what I will be looking at to answer your question.
Okay, and I'll just ask you, one of the things that I, that, that exists here, and I have not, uh, well, I've seen in other places in different kind of ways, is you, uh, there's Prop three oh one, which offers performance pay to teachers. And you have to be a teacher, you have to be in the classroom so much time in order to qualify for any one of those three buckets. But you've also extended that to your administrators. Uh, you're paying performance pay to your administrators to tune of about twenty thousand dollars. Um, and I don't know how you feel about that. I guess I'm not in a, a mindset that just because teachers get performance pay, someone else should get it too. Those statutes say teachers get performance pay. It doesn't say administrators get performance pay. And that, that twenty thousand dollars plus benefits could help, help reduce that. So just as an example of something that, that goes into that whole piece to get looked at as well.
Hey, with anything else, Ms. Kidman?
No, that's not, that's, I, I was just trying to ask, answer Mr. Wallen's question on where we stand on budget reduction. And that's, that's, I mean, of course, him and I can talk in more detail in a, in a private meeting, but that's my, that's the key point I'm gonna look at. And like I said, attrition, I think if we could achieve all these budgets cuts through attrition, that would be marvelous, but I'm afraid that might not be the case this time around.
Right. Remember, we've already reduced forty-four positions, so there's not a lot left.
Right. Gotcha. Thank you, Ms. Kidman. Uh, board members, anybody else? Okay, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll just, we've had a long discussion, Mr. Wallen and I have, and, uh, but I'll just say, just, uh, real briefly, uh, certainly, um, would support the attrition, and that's how we have been moving. That's what I, I would suggest we continue to do. And, uh, to Mrs. Kidman's points, uh, in terms of staff, we've, we have asked in the past uh, to always plan for what we need to be and not what we are. And so like you said, and when we face these kind of things, everything's on the table. Uh, you and I had a conversation about a clear slate. And now you start all over. You, you, you described what your school needs, and you've really taken a good crack at that in terms of class sizes and those kind of things. Uh, and hopefully, hoping we don't have to look at, at the, you know, reducing the workforce where it's not needed. And so I thi- I think we can move in that direction. Uh, what always helps in decisions is that you, you get, you get what is already in place with school districts are sized. It's always to get that, good to get those kind of, you know, confirmations or at least templates potentially, uh, for us to take a look at as well. So we're not operating kind of in a void and we're all by ourselves up here north, up north, because many, many school districts have, have had to face these things. Uh, and, and we're doing the same thing. And then the other thing I'll just keep reiterating, and you have it on your list that you posted at the end, that's, that's a really aggressive list for sure. And so then when we start attacking that potentially, then we have teams that really look at those things pertinent to their areas. And we all know that you, you know, what you, what you mentioned in, in the presentation is that we've got a, a whole lot of roof for a few students.
Right.
Uh, for two and a half, probably two and a half to three times larger than any school district in the state of Arizona. And that equates to money, that equates to bodies, that equates to everything. So, uh, I'm sure we'll be taking a really hard look at those things in the future. And it is good to hear that S, uh, the S F, uh, yeah, that's, that's good news, where they'll have a little more latitude, uh, to help, uh, to help school districts. So anyway, that's all I'll say about that, but challenges ahead, no doubt.
Yes.
COVID goes away and the budget issues will not go away. So as a matter of fact, they become a little bit tighter than that, uh, as Ms. Kidman has constantly said. We have to be looking two and three years down the line, and, uh, we haven't considered bond issues for quite a while. Um, but that may be something on the horizon potentially. So anyway, that's always up there too.
Well, that was one of the questions I was going to ask, is that, I, I don't think it happened this year, but is that on the horizon to look at a capital override? And a bond election, uh, you guys know the community better than I do, would the community support that, that tax increase? And remember, the other piece that goes into that is we're losing the va- the, um, uh, value of the Salt River facility. Uh, and that's going to have an impact on our taxes, uh, at some point.
Yeah. No, I, I understand that, and, and certainly the base economy of page has changed significantly. So I, I think any of us can say, well, absolutely not, but I don't think that that's necessarily a solid answer because I'm, uh, I'm reminded of, um, a, a really great presentation at the Arizona School Board Association when we had the superintendent of the air from Miami Dade, and he took over a district, a very poor district. And the one thing they did in their community that turned literally the, the community over and, and it, they started performing academically. And the communities got behind them to the point where they were able to go after a bond and because they saw the, the positivity in the school community, that, that becomes, and in our community, the school community is, is literally at least one of the major things that causes the heart to beat. And so I know that we're facing, because of COVID and other things, just a lot of morale issues and those kind of things. But, uh, what I'm so hoping for our staff is that we see the light the minute we start turning that academic piece around. And that will light the school up, it'll light our teachers up, our staff, and it'll light, it's, it'll, uh, light the town up. That's all I'll say.
Absolutely, and that's, that's one of the reasons, the fastest way to do that is through B T, beyond textbooks curriculum and putting that in place, and we're all working very hard to make that happen. Uh, and that's the one thing, going back to something Ms. Kidman said, that's the one thing that's different when you're looking at the seven-period day, is we have a different, very different curriculum model in place, I think. I know B T was brought on board, I believe, in thirteen, fourteen, so I'm not sure historically where that fits. But, um, that is something that we're really pushing hard to make happen.
All right, good. Okay, anybody else?
Uh, Bob?
Uh, go ahead, Dee. Yeah, you muted yourself. Go ahead, unmute Dee. Try it one more time. You're still muted. You, yeah, hit it once. There you go. Whoop, you're back to muted again. There, ooh.
I don't know if the internet's bad. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah, I got you, Chuck. Uh, Dee, go ahead and, uh, maybe get that figured out. We'll let Chuck go ahead and go, because we can't hear you, Dee. Dee, let's go ahead, Chuck.
Well, I just wanted to say you guys are coming in and out. I don't know if it's the internet or what, but I hear every other word.
Yeah.
Um, well, I just wanted to comment regarding what Larry was talking about, um, expanding with the buses, expanding out further for more students.
Yes.
And, um, so just that, you know, if you were to get more students, I think that's more funding, correct? And, um, you would still probably need to get more teachers though, because I would think that, I don't know what the student-to-teacher ratio is right now, but I know like, you have a lot more students versus teachers. And as far as teachers managing students, you don't want to overwhelm the teachers with a lot of students. And I don't know what the perfect ratio is, but, you know, I've heard, you know, there's a lot of students in small classes with a teacher trying to manage twenty-plus students, you know, is uh, difficult to manage. And peach. So if you're gonna reach out for more students, you're definitely going to need more teachers. And whether you need more teachers now at those, wha- whatever grade levels we need them at, is something, uh, to probably look at as well.
Yeah, uh, you know, good point. And, and again, once, uh, what drives the hiring of teachers is if you have more students than you can teach, you certainly don't want to increase, you know, the load on the teachers. So I think they both work hand in hand, so good comment. Ms. McCary, were you trying to, can you unmute now?
What about now?
Perfect.
Okay, I was going to say, I would co-essent the whole thing on the attrition, number one, I favored that. Number two, when I first came in, I did observe that we were very heavy administratively in each of the, in the buildings. And one other thing is each year we approve supplemental pay for teachers that attend workshops. Through my career, that was something that if we wanted to improve, to present to students, that was on our own part. So that's another area that we might look at, paying teachers for their supplemental courses that they take. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCary. Anybody else? Are we good? Okay, we'll move on to the next item, item D. Uh, discussion rescheduling of superintendent's evaluation. And, uh, Lynn, remind us, for all of us, the dates that we would and the dates that we sh- that we could.
Well, um, policy states that we should have done this already. Obviously, circumstances did not permit us to do that because Mr. Wallen was, um, hospitalized. Um, so we want to make sure that we get that done and we still follow through with it. I, I think that, um, anyone would understand the circumstances of why it didn't happen. It was originally scheduled for December first, I believe. Um, so I know that you probably want to look at just a special meeting for that purpose. But I put it back on here so that you But I put it back on here so that you could talk about, um, what your thoughts are on that and maybe when you would like to see that happen.
I would like to see that happen before I get to budget.
So what date might that be? Board members, what are your suggestions?
Well, I would say as soon as possible since we were supposed to do it in December.
Um, like.
Are we available to do so next month?
I was going to say we have a February ninth meeting and I believe a February twenty-third study session. We could maybe try to throw something in on February sixteenth if you would like, which is, so we would have three consecutive board meetings. But it would be on a Tuesday.
Would anybody have a problem with the sixteen?
And that would be the only item on the agenda.
Okay.
That's fine with me.
Board members?
What day are we talking about?
Sixteen.
Tuesday, February sixteenth.
Would that be at five o'clock PM?
Yes.
Okay, I am good to go for February sixteenth.
Ms. McCary, you good with that?
Good with that.
Okay, Mr. Weiss? Uh, you're, you're muted.
I'm good. I'm good.
All right, let's do that.
I have a question. Would that be in person or a Zoom thing? I mean, uh, whatever, virtual.
I think you have to look me square in the eye.
I, I, I feel like that would be the better way to go for that meeting. But again, it's up to the board how you want to proceed with that. We're gonna get to experiment.
Okay, I couldn't hear you. Sorry.
Oh.
Did you say in person? You, you were shorting out.
Uh, it could go either way. Um, because it, we won't, um, that meeting obviously will be held executive session, so it will not be broadcast live. Um, we're gonna get some time to play with that next, uh, February ninth because we do have an executive session for a student who's requesting to come back. Um, and we, Larry and I talked about this. Thought the, the best way to do that is have, we're gonna have a public hearing, a regular meeting, and then adjourn into a special meeting for the executive session. So that would work for the sixteenth as well, a special meeting, and it just won't be broadcast.
Is the sixteenth not also when we're gonna start having kids come back in person?
Um, that's in my next, this, this question, but yeah, that's the plan.
Okay.
Well, I think maybe we could just offer that as whoever wants to come in for the review. I don't think we'll require anybody to come specifically, but if you feel you can, uh, then be in the boardroom.
Okay, well, that, that's kind of my question because we've had times where there is no meeting at the district office. So I was wondering if that was, if we're gonna send kids back in person, I don't see why we can't also have an in-person meeting that night for those who want to be in person.
Right. And I'd like to say, we'd make it an option. So it'd be your, your choice, your decision.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We're clear then? It's, it'll be the sixteenth, five o'clock PM and you will have the choice to join in person or, uh, by, uh, by, by video. Okay. Uh, district newsletter, um, is this a conversation item or D? You just, well, this is, this is your time.
I think you all got a copy. Lynn told me that it was all sent to each of the board members. So I don't need to read it.
I, I did, yeah, I did see that. Yes.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
The plan was whoever was writing the letter would share it out with the other board members at the study session prior, just so you could all see it because it is a board newsletter.
Yes, that was good. Okay, any comments from the rest of board members? We're good?
I have a question. Now that we have Charles a part of, um, I'm sorry Chuck, a part of the board, does he have a date designated for his board corner?
I don't believe he does yet. Gone there. What happens Chuck is that the board members, they kind of take turns. We have a district newsletter that goes out, uh, each month at the first of the month. And, um, the board members have been taking turns writing an article that goes in there. And it doesn't have to be big, long. It's just a typically something that one page, something you want to talk about, um, pertaining to the district or Bob?
Uh, and, and what we can do, have you, have you signed, have you seen the newsletter Chuck?
Yeah, I looked at it. Um, I just kinda trying to catch what, uh, you guys are saying because it keeps going in and out. So I'm not getting the full information.
Well, you and I can talk if you want, but if you see a newsletter, uh, there's, you'll see the board corner. That's B O A R D, not B O R E D. So, uh, anyway, and so take a look at that. And so in essence, what Lynn is doing is giving you an opportunity to volunteer for the next one. How's that?
I'll do my best.
All right, that sounds good. Lynn, I heard him say yes. See how this board works? So that'll, that'll be good.
I'm being voluntold.
You're voluntold. Hey, and we'll, we'll talk about it, you and I. All right, we can have a conversation about it. Did you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're good? Yeah, he is freezing. But I did think he said yes, Lynn, correct?
Yes, I heard him say yes. Sorry to put you on the spot, Chuck.
Is everyone else live or did everything freeze on my screen? Hello?
Still alive. We're still live.
Oh, okay.
I can hear you.
Okay, everything froze on my screen. But Chuck, is it, we'll get together. Does that sound good?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
If you can hear me.
Yes, did hear you. Thank you. Uh, Larry, COVID update, item F.
Um, I'd like to, um, give you an update and give you, um, uh, some dates and plans. Based on, there's been some new information that's come out from Arizona Department Health Services and, uh, Mayor Copa County Health Department that they're saying because of the overriding need to have in discussions, I'll just read it to you, in discussions with uh, Arizona Department Health Services and Mayor Copa County Public School, Public Health District. They've agreed to support those jurisdictions who are able to maintain a safe learning environment with regular school by school monitoring. And that's the things we've been doing, those checkpoints, the masking, all those things. Regardless, and this was the critical piece that changed, and I don't know if this came from, you know, if Biden's already trickled down or what, but regardless of the levels of commu- community COVID nineteen transmission. And they're saying even if you're in the red, you can still bring back students to school. And they're saying further with the recent publication emphasizing the benefits of in-person learning, particularly for elementary schools and the emerging data indicating that in-person school attendance is not a risk factor for youth testing positive for COVID nineteen, that they would recommend that we could return to, um, in-person if we choose to. And it's, it's, again, it's a local control issue in relation to what, what we're doing. So we've been evaluating all the metrics and I have Peter on here just a minute to give you an update on where we are in the district. This is Mr. Jones, our COVID nineteen specialist who's doing a fantastic job keeping us going. Mr. Jones? Uh, Mr. Kindler, it's okay. Mr. Jones? Get the unmute.
Uh, good evening, everyone. So, um, with the recent updates on, on the guidance on when to, uh, open schools and how to, uh, let children back into schools. There's been, uh, new data, um, that in the case for children under the, uh, age of eighteen, the infection, uh, those who test positive for COVID nineteen, the infection was acquired at the home environment, not at, at school. And so they, CDC now recommends schools to reopen as long as those mitigation strategies are, uh, in place. And we do have all, all those mitigations are the same of wearing masks, of, of the social distancing. And also, um, you know, just the various temperature checks and all, all the other things that we have already have been doing. Um, we'll just reinstate it as we welcome the students back, uh, with the hybrid model.
How many, uh, what's your data show right now for, per page?
Yes. Page, it is, uh, in the substantial, uh, outbreak range, um, as, as published by the Coquigny County. So right now we're at seven hundred and thirty per a hundred and thousand cases. Now, that's extrapolated because, you know, we only have a low population. So that number's kind of big. But overall, uh, the previous week of the January sixteenth, there were eighty-eight cases in pay in page.
How many?
Still in the substantial, uh, range as outlined by the state's met, uh, guidance. But the state has, uh, made the position to allow, uh, schools to open up and not, uh, just because the, the school is the safest place for, for all these, these students. There's low transmission rates as, as long as we maintain those, uh, safe, uh, mitigation strategies.
And with that, um, can you update, how many, we, we had, Peter's been working with Indian Health Service, Banner, all the local um, facilities and stuff. And we had a, last week, we had a large group of people that went to Tuba City. You want to share those, those numbers?
So, um, in coordination with the, uh, Tuba City, uh, Medical Center, um, we, they we've asked to, to join their Lits and, and they did allow us to join, uh, while they did their other educational staff for their school district. And so, uh, roughly about a hundred, uh, of our staff went down there, uh, last Wednesday and were able to receive the vaccine. And will, uh, go down again in three weeks or less, I guess two weeks from now and receive the second dose.
And then everyone else.
Before the Tuba City to allow us to, uh, to join them.
Yeah, and thank you for building, reaching out to Dr. Hugh and, and building that connection. And then locally, where are we locally with Banner and?
Yeah, so currently, um, Banner and, uh, Candylands is providing vaccines for those who are in that, um, Phase one B, which includes, uh, the educational staff, includes those over the age of sixty-five and other essential workers. And so, uh, any of, so they've also been facilitating that, that and some of our staff is, has either received the first vaccine at Banner or in Candylands and, or has scheduled appointments for them. So, uh, with, with our surveys that we've done with, uh, with the staff, uh, about eighty percent of the, of the staff at Asian High School District has either received the first vaccine or has a scheduled appointment.
What was the percentage, Peter? I didn't catch it.
Eighty percent.
Eighty? Wow, okay.
Yeah.
Good.
Well, above the national average, uh, for participation.
Okay, very, very good.
So, so given that information, we're looking, uh, I had originally wanted to open on February first, but as we, evaluated the situation with everybody here. Are you seeing a letter in front of you?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Uh, I, we drafted this letter today looking at all the mitigating aggravating circumstances related to this and, uh, saying that, uh, the week of, this week will be current school. And we've also had waivers for the on-school, so onsite support, uh, based on the metrics. But now we're saying, okay, we're there. So we're going to, we're going to open onsite support on February, on Monday. So the onsite support will open and I've gotten a lot of emails from parents right now saying we want our kids back in school. And I'm saying, okay, onsite support's our first step. That will be the first through the fifth. And then, um, we will continue for the remainder of the year, the onsite support. Uh, we would also on February eighth through the twelfth, teachers that have been working in their homes, uh, can begin to come back and bring their stuff back and get ready. And that we look at, um, February tenth was, was a pivotal point because that's when those hundred people that Peter talked about are going to go back to Tuba City for that second dose. And so that's a day that we, we want to be very conscious of. So based on that, and then February twelfth is a professional development day. We said, let's have all students, uh, return to school on February sixteenth, in-person learning. Those wishing to remain remote, remain remote to do so. Wednesday would still be early release would remain the same for students. Uh, we would be in person five days on campus for those that want to be that. The bus routes would begin to run the normal bus routes. When we were in this model before, we had about twenty to thirty kids on each bus riding in, come into school. And then from February sixteenth on, we would be in-person learning unless there is a major outbreak. And then we would work with Coquigny County. Peter would be working with them on how to mitigate that. But based on our numbers and where we are, staff will be, uh, eighty percent or better, uh, vaccinated. And so we would begin to, to do that. So we're looking at a, unless you have a, some issue with that, we would begin, uh, on, uh, February sixteenth, in-person for the rest of the year.
Uh, question. And then you said in your letter that kids could come every day, right? There's not this half and half model anymore.
That's correct. And the reason we know that is because when we ran that before, um, when we did go to everybody returning, we still only had twenty to thirty percent riding the buses. So our issue is to maintain that social distancing and we were able to do that. In the classrooms, there were seven to ten students that attended when we opened in person. Now that will grow and I think from the letters I'm getting, emails I'm getting from parents, the frustration level is getting higher out there in getting us back to school. And so there may be more, but I think we're prepared to handle that. By putting the OSS in place, we'll have a, we could be able to judge that better. By putting the onsite support in place beginning Monday, that'll be the first, first step in letting us turn and see how, what the numbers are going to look like. And we're going to offer those onsite support at the school site. So if you're a desert Lakeview student, you go to Lakeview, Desert View, you go there rather than a central location so that we could easily transition to the classrooms when we open on the sixteenth. It's two weeks away. Uh, it sounds like a long time, but I can tell you, uh, from, you know, by the time we get everything in place and get moving, um, we'll be, we'll be ready. Um, Ernie and, uh, Kevin are already on the onsite support, getting that set up. The staff are going back and reviewing all the protocols for kids coming into school and that kind of stuff.
Now, what, what, what will be, we'll still be, we'll offer the opportunity for people to come to in-class. And, um, then you'll still, you'll still have a virtual piece to it, but will teachers be able to focus on their in-class and then we'll have other teachers focusing on virtual?
That depends on the model that's in the building. I know, um, I believe it was Lakeview was looking at something like that where they had, you know, five first grade teachers. So three would be virtual and three would be, um, uh, classroom. It depends on how they set it up. Uh, there's teachers that do great with everybody in both. I've been in classrooms where they have both. So it would be how they put it together in relation to that. So that's what we would be able to support.
Okay, will parents be able to, will, parents will be able to say, I want to go to a classroom that's one hundred percent teacher uh, driven?
Yes.
Uh, versus, versus virtual and?
Well, no, they may not be able to do that because there may be some that will be split again.
Well, that's, that's what I was asking.
Yeah.
Okay, so Bob, I can't, Bob, like I can explain that to you because my son at Lakeview, he was chain, he, he, he wanted to be in-person school and he actually got a new teacher because of that. Because, so at Lakeview, at Lakeview, they have that model. I don't know about Desert View, but I don't see how that's feasible at the middle school or high school because, you know, kids are going to different subjects. So you're gonna have to have that virtual component.
Yeah.
Correct. That, that's a good point, uh, Ms. Kidman. Because, um, and that's the one I want to say, not negative, but one of the considerations is if you want to go from one to the other, you may change teachers, just like you, you've talked about. And, but we're doing it all the time now anyway. So it's just one of the pieces that gets added in there.
Okay.
I think the most important thing to remember is that nobody's being forced to come in person. You can still make that choice as a parent and as a student. You can choose which model you want to use and that could be dependent. Which model you want to use, and that could be dependent on your risk factors, or maybe you, I have actually one child. That does better with the virtual model because there's fewer distractions for him. So I think that's a choice, that's the most important thing to remember is nobody's being forced. You can still make your own choice based on your needs or risk factors or just your personal circumstances.
Good point, Sandra, thank you.
So we want to, we want to start publish this out tomorrow and get this out to everybody so that plenty of notice to prepare. With that and then move forward.
Can I make one recommendation?
Yes.
I read, I read your letter and I can't quite remember if you mentioned the. Vaccination rates of our staff, I think that might really.
Yeah, I did not.
You know, putting, putting that information out, I think would be very helpful.
Okay.
Because I think, you know, I think that would maybe calm the fears of some people. That they know that the staff's vaccinated and very highly unlikely. To contract COVID and then pass it on to their children. I don't know, that would just be some, I mean. I found that number very impressive and I think that would not, would not hurt to publicize that.
Yeah, I can add that into one of the paragraphs. Definitely, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
So having our students come back to onsite support, how many of our staff are there with the? OSS that are currently at each site? That's who I'm kind of worried about because they haven't gotten their second dose yet and they're already going to be. Or present around students.
Yes, but remember when we ran OSS for. Four, five, six weeks, we had no contacts. I believe in OSS, they were caught, they were, when they come to the screening is where we're catching them and dealing with that. Piece there, the staff in OSS depends on the number of kids, so as the number of kids goes up, the number of staff goes up. To put that in place. Is that fairly accurate, Peter?
Yes, so in the contact tracing that we perform with the district response team. There hasn't been any student to teacher. Spread of the virus. There is one instance of teacher to, or staff to staff occurrence, but.
Not at work.
Yeah, but actually those individuals did not have any contact with students.
Yes, Larry, can you hear me?
Yes ma'am.
Yeah, I'd like to know when we're going to get some updated written reports. On what has been collected by Mr. Jones thus far on the COVID nineteen data. I haven't seen anything in writing.
It's on our website, but we can get you, I can actually send you the email I have right now on the latest numbers. Right now we have. Eight, and I believe when I asked the question, and Peter can share that eight was actually one family.
Okay, I'd like to get that information.
Yeah, yeah, the large majority is just one family, and so, and none of those numbers right there are staff members.
That's eight students then. But we do post those numbers on our website every day. You can go in and look at them.
Larry, is that about it?
That's it, guys.
Okay, board members, any other comments, concerns, any other information you need for Mr. Wallen? Okay, not hearing any. I think that looks to be the conclusion of our, of our agenda. Motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn at, what is it, seven twenty-nine?
I second that motion.
Yeah, we have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you very much, board members. Thank you, Superintendent Wallen. And. This is Martin, Peter, thank you so much, and Lynn, thank you always for getting this put together.
Thank you.
We are adjourned.